And we're ready whenever you are.
Good evening. For those attending remotely, those attending in person, welcome to tonight's first 2025 budget workshop. The agenda for tonight will deal with discussions on general fund revenue, public safety, and library and museum. With that, I will turn this over to the city manager, Father Cronus, to begin the presentation and discussions.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a reminder, the next workshop is next Monday, the 30th, at 6:00 PM. We'll talk about all of the general fund appropriations minus public safety. Our final workshop is on November 4th, also at 6:00 PM, where we'll discuss revenues and appropriations for both the water and sewer funds. Before I begin, I'd really like to take this opportunity to thank all the partners and staff for all their efforts on the preliminary budget. It is not easy to decrease the use of fund balance and cut the levy at the same time, but their dedication and their hard work and they sharpened their pencils pretty good. And I did feel that it's appropriate to show them some appreciation for that. So thanks to those who are here and those who didn't make it yet. I also encourage during all of our workshops for councils to ask every question that they have. It's really important that you have a clear and concise idea of what these numbers have been, what's behind the numbers and then what goes on. I will caution and hope that we don't get into a line-by-line review. Certainly, you're council and you have every right to do so, but it's been my experience that takes a long time. And generally speaking, we've been through these lines several times. You've got a lot as much ahead as we do. But process is yours, the workshops are yours, so feel free to ask any questions. If council has a consensus about changing a budget line to change a number, I'll be happy to keep a tally of that. We can, at the end of the process, introduce a resolution to manage changes. So we will keep track of that if this works. So feel free, if there are questions that get to a point of consensus, we'll be able to change them. The next ask is, I hope mine, that if by chance appropriation numbers are lower, there ends up being a bit of a surplus based on the numbers here. I hope that council will consider putting those extra dollars in contingency. Having a contingency is very important for operations. And I think because we're already delivering the levy decrease, I'm hoping that we could boost our contingency numbers, which are not as high as they probably need to be. I'd rather have something rather than nothing, and that's why there are contingency numbers in this budget. But if we can boost those numbers in any way, shape or form, I think that will help operations. Your alternative is to diminish fund balance, and that's not something that I'm ever comfortable in doing during here. I also want to remind those folks that are out there and for council as well, that this budget is what we've put together. Two budget parameters. The first was a goal of reducing property taxes, which it did. And to do so over five years to get the property tax levy annual below eighty percent of the full CTO. The other parameter was to reduce the reliance on fund balance to balance our spending versus revenues. We were able to do both of those things in this preliminary budget. I also want to offer my idea of what conservative budgeting is, because it's throughout this budget. And if you understand where I came from, I hope that will help from a context standpoint. I agree that a conservative budget takes as little from taxpayers via the levy as necessary to cover all of the appropriations, depending, no matter what the budget happens to be, and in the hopes maybe have a little bit left over for cap, purchasing equipment, trucks, those kinds of things. In my experience, conservative budgeting has been in many municipalities, and I'm not sure if you're yet, I'm pretty new. But what I've seen is maybe an underestimation of revenues to make sure we hit the number and maybe padding our expense numbers a bit to make sure we've got enough to operate. That's what contingency is for, quite frankly. And what that usually ends up doing is forcing the levy to be a little bit higher than it needs to be. So when you look at, especially on the revenue side, you may think we're pushing the envelope on some of these numbers. But what we really did was utilize trend analysis.
Public, just one of the members of the public said, "You're breaking up terribly when you're speaking."
Okay.
"You're having a difficult time understanding." Sorry to interrupt you.
Yep. Hopefully, that's better. Not sure where I was on this. But anyway, when you look, especially at the revenues, but certainly in the appropriations as well, our goal needs to be, in my estimation, getting as close in our budget numbers as what our actual numbers are going to be. And that tells us that we levy the right amount for what services we provide. So as we have the discussions, I just wanted council to know that that's kind of the approach that I took and the department had supported me on that in that regard. As far as the book is concerned, your output looks a bit different than in past years. We utilized the Tyler Budget Module, which the city has been paying for but not utilizing. And it really saves a lot of time in the back office, especially in the controller's office. So things look a little bit different, but I think all of the information you need is there. And you'll also see in the budget output a couple of columns. One is called 2025 Current Services, which was the department head's first crack at the numbers, and then the 2025, it says prelim, but it's really the preliminary budget. And that's what, after discussions, we ended up putting in those lines. On tab three, you'll see your traditional charts and the numbers and the summaries in visual form. Tabs four through seven are divided up into our different operating funds. Tab nine is important, so I wanted to explain a little bit of what is in there. That's both a summary and a detail of service enhancements proposed by the department heads. Some were included, some were not included. They included ones on the summary in green, the ones not included in red. And then each of the individual documents that were submitted are stamped with either approved or not approved. And I thought it was important that council knew all of the services that were proposed and what I thought we could squeeze or justify into the budget. Obviously, council has final say in what goes in or what doesn't. You can accept the preliminary budget as is, modify those, change them, reject, approve as you see fit, and we'll get them in. But I just wanted you to have a complete list of what department has asked for and what I was able to get into the budget. Tab 10 obviously has the budget process calendar, and it also has a daily detail of what departments we're going to go at, what page numbers they are within the budget, and assigned department numbers, just for easy reference. Is that boring, apparently? So with that said, I thought we would jump in. We'll start with revenues, general fund revenues. Then we'll go in order in the public safety appropriations, starting with police, going to fire, and then through animal control, code enforcement, I think that's the last one. And then obviously, rescue squad is last, but the appropriation is zero. So, but we're including them all. So I thought we would start with general fund revenues. Angela and I will take most of the questions on this, although the department heads are here to talk and answer questions specific to revenues for their departments. And so I did distribute both via email and in front of you a document. The title is General Fund Revenue Highlights. The two probably biggest, most important revenue numbers are property taxes and sales tax, so I'll go over those really quickly. Property tax levy is a dollar reduction of $117,165 over the 2024 adopted budget, and that is a rate decrease of 31 cents. Sales tax, we'll spend a little bit more time on. We don't have a lot of history since preemption. 2022 is not a complete year. So 2023 is really the only complete year we have for data analysis and for trend analysis. But on the last page of this document, you can see a chart there that takes 2023's sales tax revenues by month and compares that to 2024's sales tax by month. And also has a column for the amount that the county is sharing with us with the extra 1% of sales tax collection from 3% to 4%. As you can see there, the total projection with a 4.9% increase year-over-year, which is what we are from this point forward, gets you to just under $2.9 million. You can see that's in orange, under the 2024 total sales tax number. Generally speaking, sales tax for municipalities increase somewhere between 3% and 5% every year. What I did was take a 2% escalator from this year to next year, and we get just over $2.95 million. Our increase thus far is 4.9%, actually 4.88% if you want to be precise. The counties, not sure what happened there, but that's a good thing. The counties' increase is 4.8%, so we're pretty much online with them, maybe slightly better, which is not the worst thing in the world. And so that's how we justify the sales tax number in this budget. Certainly, when you're in a strong fiscal position, going a little light on sales tax and trying to drive some surplus is never a bad thing. But given the fact that we're running deficits year after year since 2022, we'll run a deficit this year. We're going to run a deficit in the general fund next year. It's probably better to try and get as close as we can on the sales tax number to try and reduce the reliance on the levy. So that's the justification for that number. I did provide a number of items here, revenue numbers and some explanations, but I figured we would just open it up. I've done enough talking, and this is really a workshop for you folks.
Any questions or comments from council?
I do have a comment to make, I guess, or a request. In an effort to develop a comfort level with the proposed property tax decrease and proposed use of fund balance in 2025, before the next budget hearing on the 30th, can we get estimates of fund balance from 2022 and 2023 and projections for 2024 through 2027? And then the projections, I would suggest we use the numbers that were included in the city manager's presentation to us at the end of September, the long term, you know, goal of a little over $100,000 a year in reduction and eventually getting to zero on fund balance as the basis for determining those projections. And that way, we can have a better handle on our comfort level, how healthy our fund balance is or lack of health, to determine if we're comfortable with those, with the preliminary budget numbers.
Absolutely. I received a draft 2022 to review. Got here, I don't know, about 3:30 today. So I did pour through it a bit. Angela and I will get together and review it tomorrow. I expect to have 2023's by the end of the month, but we can still do what you want to do by the 30th.
That would be very helpful. Plus, it also gives the idea, you know, fund balance has a degree of help to it about some potential suggestions for modification to the budget. So that will be appreciated.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. The aim funding, just for the public and for council, a bit of a risk in including the temporary increase we received this year, close to $200,000. Personally, I think it's a risk to take. I would be, I guess, surprised that once received by municipalities that the state would back off on. You know, they gave themselves an out by calling it a temporary amount for one year and not increasing the formula for aim, which has not changed in 15 or 16 years. But I support the recommendation from staff to include that in that revenue line. Anything else on revenue?
Well, I'm comfortable with everything that you stated and asked for.
Okay.
Just one comment on that additional aim funding. We do have two proposed positions, appropriations of which are in the contingency account and not in the departments. So if that additional aim funding does not come through, it would be recommendation of management at this point just to take those appropriations out or not go through with them. And it won't be a one-to-one cancellation, but it will be enough to call it pretty good. So we do have a contingency just in case.
Yep. I'm just, thank you for sharing that. Okay, so we'll move on to public safety.
Absolutely. And our first department, Department 3120, is the police department. I asked the chief to come on up. Chief has provided you with a supportive information. And I'll just start by saying that the personnel lines of this budget do include the addition of one police officer, additionally, funding in quarter four for one additional lieutenant as part of the succession plan. Other than that, chief, what was yours?
Yes, I've got to start with thanking our unsung hero at the police department, Dawn Mills, who's my administrative aide. She knows our budget inside and out. She's the one who pays our bills every week. So she is going to retire this coming June, so she's going to be a huge loss to our department. So she's my right hand when it comes to our budget. So I got to thank her for her hard work on this budget each and every year. Also, thank the city manager for the additional position that we desperately need. I know everyone sitting up here on this council knows what this police department's been through in the last four years. Again, I don't plan on going through everything line by line, but for the public's interest, I just want to let them know just for equipment that the police department plans on purchasing with their tax dollars in 2025. We're not buying any sorts of elaborate equipment or anything like that. We're essentially replacing an outdated computer and then just some life-saving, basically medical equipment for our officers, tourniquets, combat gauze. As you know, we unfortunately did have an officer shot in June of this year. So we're just updating our life-saving equipment, so each officer has their own. It's updated with what they should be carrying and also enough to have one in each vehicle. So we're never too far away from that equipment. So again, we're not elaborate asking for any big purchases this year. The police department actually saved, if you want us to call it a savings, from 2024 to 2025, our budget went down $165,000, even with the addition of an officer. I did ask the city manager for two officers, and that's what I'm going to be here tonight, ask one out of you, council. What two officers does is stabilizes the department. It allows us to be solid in having our investigations unit. An investigations unit is not a luxury in a department as busy as ours. About a month ago, I presented to this council that we are as busy as the New York State Police is in St. Lawrence County. We answered 40% more serious crimes than the next nearest municipality. Those numbers on themselves should just be staggering. The state police had twelve investigators to handle that amount of crime in this county. Right now, I have one investigator. So I'm just trying to make that a solid structured number for the department, so we're not pulling our detective to come back to the road patrol when numbers get tight, when someone gets hurt, someone gets injured, and that's going to happen. Police work is a contact sport. If I was a football coach and I told you I have 11 players and I'm told you I was going to do a whole season like that and we're just going to play defense, people will laugh at me. And that's what our department's doing right now. I have enough to play defense, but if one horn gets hurt, I'm not going to have a team that can field. And that's a true statement. So even with our openings that we had, we have three openings in the department. The city manager's approved one more hire, so that'd be four hires coming in 2025. It plugs the holes we have and adds us to promote someone to a lieutenant at the end of the year. It helps with the succession plan, stabilizes our investigations unit. But all it does is fill the ranks of that team. And again, someone gets hurt, injured, someone transfers out or disciplined, we're back to having no one sitting on the bench to replace. So I asked for that position for this year, and I will come back to you next year and ask for one more position. And you'll never, as long as I'm chief, currently ask for another officer. That's where the police department needs to be at, which is a total of 24 officers. But in all reality, 21 are working at the police department, three are at the school district. But that's where we need to be at. It's far from the 28 or 29 we used to be at, but it's economically insufficient, and it gives the men and women of the police department a break. Right now, they are the only employees in the city who get called 24 hours a day routinely, seven days a week. That doesn't happen in the fire department, doesn't happen in the DPW, doesn't happen in the planning department, doesn't happen in code enforcement, doesn't happen to me, doesn't happen to the city manager, but my patrol staff and my detective, they can't count on a day off. They can plan a weekend getaway, three months out. But that Thursday, they get a phone call and say, "Your time is canceled. You need to work the shift. You need to work the airport." That doesn't happen to any other employees around here. The way you resolve that, by making sure you have enough employees to cover the jobs, is asked of them. There's no other way of getting around that. So that's my only ask. You're looking between $64,000 to $90,000 estimate for that officer, depending on what insurance point they take. And I dare say, you know, we budget higher. You have to budget higher. Out of these four or five, I'm asking for a fifth officer, the budget that they all are going to take that family plan at roughly $30,000 apiece. There's no way that five officers, young officers, are all going to take a family plan. Never seen it. So I think you're going to find your savings there. Yes, you have to budget that number, but in all reality, it's not going to be that high.
Thank you, chief. Any questions or comments from council?
I'd just like to talk about the dispatch a little bit, because I see that that was not approved. If either Fong, if you'd like to address that, or a combination of please.
Well, let me take a shot at it, and then the chief can fill in where I fell. The county has committed to doing dispatching for us in those evening hours. Should that not actually come to fruition, what we would probably have to do is to shift that second lieutenant funding over to a dispatch position. So in my narrative, my budget message, I did talk a little bit about that. So thank you for bringing that up. Our hope is that everything is seamless with the county, and they start to do that dispatching and everything goes great. But we have to plan for contingencies when things don't happen, and so that's the way we're going to be able to address it at this point.
Chief, if you wanted to add anything, if you're sure, I can give you an update as recent as 2:30 this afternoon. I don't think the county communicates with each other. I know the county administrator tells the city manager they're willing to do it. The director of EMS tells me he can do it, but he needs to be told. It's A-OK from the county administrator. So I'm sick of being the middleman, so I went right to the county administrator myself today, and she will not return my phone calls. So we're kind of stuck in limbo, but we desperately need them to do so because this either-or is not going to work out for the police department. We need that 30 grand to cover overtime, but I don't have the personnel to cover the overtime. So we either hire part-time dispatchers, and if that happens, we don't have the money for a succession plan to hire a second lieutenant. And in 2026, I know my lieutenant right here is leaving. Guarantee you that. More than likely, I'm leaving as well. I can't keep putting puzzle pieces together. I've been doing that for four years. I'm done living in the not-house, putting puzzles together. So we got to promote a second lieutenant this year, so he can be trained to be a lieutenant and then more than likely be trained to be the chief. If not, we're going to set that department up for failure, and you're going to promote a young screen sergeant, more than likely, to be a chief with zero administrative experience.
Let me fall back on the dispatch here. Obviously, this has been a concern over the last couple of years. I mean, where are they with this? Are they up and running? Can they effectively take?
So right now, yeah. I mean, the 911 center never went down, but they're operating out of several different buildings because they're doing construction. But it is up and functioning. They dispatch for us from 11 o'clock at night to 7:00 in the morning. So we're just asking for them to take on four more hours. So for them to say, like, we don't have the staff, or you have, your staff is already working, and you're doing it for us for eight hours. We're asking, just asking for four more. I mean, and I have the need to do it right now. I have one night shift where I schedule two people due to a, I will start that Friday night. I'll have a retirement Friday, and I'll be scheduling a night shift of just two people. I need three, because someone has to sit the desk. So I need the county to step up and help us out.
And that's at much higher pay rate, pay grade, and kind of a waste of our resources.
It is. I mean, we pay our cops to be cops. We don't pay them to be dispatchers.
Well, yeah, it's good that you're looking forward to the, you know, to the future of retirement, Lieutenant McClair, potentially yourself in the next couple of years. But, you know, with that being said, you know, it's good to be proactive in that aspect and look to be able to get that out there.
And that's the decisions you make for 2025, you got to keep in mind, are not for 2025, they're for 2026. The academy starts in March. That got pushed back, so we're not trying to make our hires in two weeks. By the time the test results come out, that's, and all the medical stuff passes, that's usually at the end of December. So it gives us like a week and a half, two weeks to do a background check. If we're looking to hire four or five, the sheriff's office is looking to do six or seven, and every other PD's got a couple to hire. It's an impossible feat. So the board of directors, which is all the chiefs and the sheriff, we had the academy pushed back to March, pushes graduation back to the end of July, and so that pushes back our field training till the end of October. So no matter how many officers they hire, they're no good to us till the end of October, beginning of November of 2025. So we're going to have a tough 12 months ahead of us in this police department. But I just want to give them, our officers, a glimmer of hope that help is on the way. If not, I'm afraid, why aren't they going to go to the sheriff's office and pick up one of those six or seven spots? Or go to Canton PD, where they're going to make money doing less work. You know, give them hope and let them stay at a department they love. That's why they've stuck it out for the last four years.
As a refresher, how often do they run the academy? Is it as needed?
Once a year.
Just once a year?
Yep. And we have a second academy now, SUNY Potstown, for now. You know, that academy, that school in general has some financial difficulties as well. But they also offer an academy in August. So if there's a chance we don't get all our cadets into the March Academy, for whatever reasons, we could get some into August as well. But that just again pushes it out further. But we do have two options now.
The hiring of a lieutenant, you'd be looking to bring out towards the end of the year as well.
Yes. Yep, just trying to, yep. And I'm looking at the last quarter of the fiscal year of '25. So we'll give them about six months of a transition with the lieutenant and I.
Chief, has there been any inquiries yet to our transfer incentive?
The inquiries we have had were from the tribal police department, and I would love to hire them, but unfortunately, they cannot transfer because they're not hired off a civil service list, and you can only transfer from a civil service position to a civil service position. And of course, they wanted to transfer because they don't have a state retirement at the tribal police department.
So just to be clear, you want another officer in addition to this?
Yes. That would bring our force up to 23 smart officers, where we don't pay for five of those.
Bring it to 24.
I would love to get to 24. That's, that would be my ask for 2026. If you want to do 24, Councilor Stanford, I'll be a huge fan of you.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
I'm sure every one of us would like to.
Yeah, but my ask, you know, understanding, I understand the constraints of the budget, and I'd like to get to 23 this year. That was our numbers in 2021.
All right. Any other questions or comments from council?
If I could just make one quick.
Please, Father.
I tried really hard to get that second officer for the chief. At one point in time, I even had it penciled in, but when other priorities came in, I just wasn't able to do it. He's, everything he said is on point and spot on. I can't disagree with anything that he said. I just, given the other priorities that we had, just I wasn't able to squeeze it in. If some additional savings come in, I'd be happy to sharpen the pencil and work through it, but I just wasn't able to do it in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Chief.
All righty, moving on. Next, next department is going to be thirty-four-ten, Fire Department. Good evening. I believe somebody has received an email this afternoon. I put a handout down here in front of your chairs. I'm just going to read the cover letter at this point. Which is concerned and issues within the twenty-twenty-five fire department budget. Department will be operating with twenty personnel throughout all, most if not all of the year in twenty-twenty-five. This is a result of a twenty-twenty-four retirement that was effective in August. A retirement that will be taking place in January. We have two individuals that have pending workers' comp two oh seven A claims in which neither are expected to return to work. Currently, we're without a valid civil service list for the position of firefighter. In the handout, it says that we have an anticipated test date of January. I spoke with civil service this afternoon. The test date is going to be March first, so it's two months longer, too much, two months farther away than we wanted. We should be getting a announcement posting of it by November first. With that being said, by the time we hit a ballot list, do a background check, physical agility test, you're looking at probably August before we could hire the four positions. And then we'll need an available academy. Fortunately, most academies do start in August, so as long as we can get them through the process of hiring, we should be able to fill those positions. The academy lasts sixteen weeks. So with twenty, twenty personnel throughout twenty-twenty-five, the current CBA has a minimum on-duty staffing of five, which means that with twenty personnel, every time someone takes time off, it's going to be overtime in twenty-twenty-five. Which is, it's been a problem in the past, but we were able to, to get the twenty-four. January of this year when we hired, but these unforeseen circumstances with injuries, we had some substantial illnesses also throughout the year. We're not, we weren't able to maintain the twenty-four number. Some of the increased costs that you'll see as you go through the budget lines, the biggest one is under employee benefit costs, which is retirement, social security and health insurance. They've increased in my department alone by two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars from twenty-four to twenty-five. Goods and services, as we all know, when we go to the gas pumps in the grocery store continue to rise. The fire department has aging apparatus, equipment and a facility. And it requires more maintenance than they have in the past. We also have the contractual issues which give the cost of living raises in the staffing levels. That's increased our personal service lines. The notable exclusions that you will notice that are not in twenty-twenty-five budget is that there is no budget line for the fifth man coverage, which we've had for the last two years. Each shift will have a minimum of five personnel, so there'll be no overtime to cover the fifth man. Also, there is no hazard pay in the budget. Management and IFF, local seventeen ninety-nine have agreed in principle to waive hazard pay if in fact it becomes available or becomes required by the contract. So that's, that's a good thing for both parties. And in conclusion, the previous years of understaffing and neglect of the equipment in our facility will not be able to be corrected in a single budget year. Stabilization of the workforce will be the key factor in the future reduction of costs to provide fire protection for the citizens of Augsburg. I'm not here begging for positions like I normally am. The positions that I am requiring are actually in the budget. It's just the inability to hire that I've been stating all year long to you that is the problem. At least we now have a date of March first. I would rather it avenge January, but those things are out of my control.
Can March first for the test or?
The exam will be March first. Traditionally, it's in January, so.
How long do they usually, I'm sorry, Chief? How long do they usually take to score the academic results?
Well, I spoke with the director of civil service today and I'd asked, because there was talk that civil service is going to start exonerating the testing, the grading. She said they're still figuring out, police and fire get moved up, but figure out three months.
And this might not be a question for you, Chief, maybe for the city manager. I mean, I thought there'd been reports in the media where the governor was considering waiving civil service requirements for certain positions. Has there been any?
I can address that.
Okay.
Police and fire are exempt from, are exempt from that law. They, they cannot be utilized. And I can't think of the name of the law that you're referring to, but we cannot do it. Help, yeah, help act.
Thank you.
I did go, I gave a couple worksheets on the, the larger line items. I don't know if you wanted to go in, go through them. It was just an explanation of the bigger expenses throughout my budget. I wasn't sure, it's my first time doing a budget with the new council, I wasn't sure what process or procedure you would like to do, so. I can tell you that we have since we hired in six new firefighters, we've started to increase our specialized training. At the end of the year, we will have, all individuals will be EMT certified, code certified, and we will now have seven car seat technicians. I have a officer that is scheduled to take some training that'll allow him to be the training officer, which I currently still hold the title of and have a few other individuals that are looking for training to be involved in the juvenile fire setter program.
Chief, earlier in this year, when management shared information with council with regards to potential cost savings in the hire of six additional firefighters, there was an estimate of some significant savings going into twenty-twenty-five. This preliminary budget, I don't think reflects that. Is that an insult of the numbers in staffing that you, you're, you're projecting at the twenty? Whereas earlier years, you're expecting a higher number?
So correct. When I approached the council in January to hire to the twenty-four level, we had discussed that mid-year reevaluating because we knew of two potential retirements of whether or not we would hire to maintain the staffing of twenty-four. The savings, which was around the three-hundred-thousand dollar figure that I projected to be in twenty-twenty-five was based on going into twenty-twenty-five with twenty-four positions filled. And obviously with these, the extra retirement that I didn't know about and the two individuals that have been off and will not be coming back, were out of my control. But I could show you how the numbers, the, on the vacation overtime line, which you do have a worksheet for. That would, that would essentially would have been cut in half by having twenty-four firefighters. So that's a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar savings right there. I wouldn't have to have fifty thousand dollars in the training line or the fifty thousand dollars in the equipment line because I wouldn't have to outfit new firefighters at ten thousand dollars apiece or send them to an academy at ten thousand dollars apiece. So I think the numbers, the numbers that I did present in January were, were solid. It just, the staffing, reduction of staff and the unexpected reduction of staffing is what caused it not to be reflected in the actual budget.
Thank you.
So I do see the overtime is
It is.
Nine hundred thousand, twenty-two, two hundred thousand now, I mean. That's obviously because we've done it, right?
It's, yes, so it's because of the, we are going to be at twenty. Last year, we were at eighteen. So obviously, every time you get a shift that has more than five personnel to, it saves overtime. The goal is to get to where we have a stable amount of overtime that is not overworking the firefighters. As I've stated before, they are making a lot of money, but you can't pay for memories you missed, they're missing birthdays and holidays. And same as with the police department.
And then in, in researching the retirement rates at the state comptroller's office, if I'm looking at the correct retirement plan, it looks like the rate in February of twenty-four was around thirty-one percent and is projected in February twenty-five to go to thirty-five and a half percent. And if those are the correct numbers, that is a significant increase, which is certainly showing in the budget that we have before us tonight. Okay, anything else for the chief? Again, thank you for your presentations, mate.
Glad that the union decided not to charge us the hazard pay. That's sweet.
Yeah, we're, we're building bridges.
Yeah, that's important. One of the goals of this council is try to, to help build bridges in many different areas. So it's nice to see that a change in the atmosphere has resulted in that good faith gesture.
Yeah, we're, we're going in the right direction. Trust is a hard thing to get back, so hopefully we're on course.
Good, it's good to hear, thank you.
All righty, next department is Animal Control thirty-five-ten, that's on page twenty-three of, of the budget worksheet. Really no, no changes from previous year. The stipend is still fifteen thousand dollars and also a contribution to the SPCA for sixteen thousand dollars and a few dollars here and there for, for material supplies and those kinds of things.
Any questions, council? No, thank you.
Okay, next department is Code Enforcement. That's on page twenty-four, so just flip one page. Department is A thirty-six-twenty. The preliminary budget does, well, I guess two things to say. Number one, the preliminary budget does have an additional code enforcement officer. It is not in the salary lines, as I mentioned before. We put a plug number in contingency because we were just unsure about that additional aid funding and I didn't want to put it in the salary line. I thought it was more appropriate to have in the contingency line. The second thing I will share with council is we did receive a resignation. I don't know if we want to call it a retirement officially, it says resignation on the letter, but we, maybe we consider it a retirement from one person in the codes office. So we would look to hire that vacancy and add a third code enforcement person.
Personally, I'd rather hire another police officer. You know, we can do it even on a contingency, floating out there, you know, that's just my thoughts. I know codes is understaffed too. I mean, I get to I just think, I watched our police, they've lasted four years. I don't know how they hang, they held on the way that they had. It's, it's been brutal. I mean, I've had guys pull up to my house and just look at me and go, whoa. You know, it's just, it's, it's been brutal. I get it, I get it, you know, talking to you half an hour, maybe it's just a little de-stress or something, but, but the department is definitely in dire need of some help, so. That's just my thoughts and I hope anybody else agrees, but.
I, I agree with you, Dan. I think that I would rather see that spend of the police department versus codes. I think when we look back, yes, codes does have a heavy lift also, but we really need that in the police department. That's affecting people on a daily basis with not being able to be proactive with the police work that they try to do.
With, with code, with this recent retirement, I, I, I'm curious to know whether or not there'd be an issue with recruitment of somebody in the code enforcement.
Certainly.
I mean, you're looking at one, you know, to replace through attrition, so to speak, and then to add another. So, you know, are we running into the same hurdles there? And if, and if, you know, potentially so, you know, I mean, you know, our council chambers getting, you know, we're getting hit with codes, right? Every, every, every meeting, right? With the water and sewer and the double billing and this, that and everything else under the sun. But with that being said, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, if, if that becomes an issue, that might be a possible transition to additional police officer. But then again, you know, the recruitment, you know, and the issues and trying for any title for that matter. You know, so it's, it's surely something to keep an eye on and recognizing the need in code enforcement as well, but there's needs everywhere and some needs might need to trump others.
Yeah, this is a question of what council believes is a prioritization. There's not enough money to hire everybody that we need, we need to do that. I guess the, the one saving grace on maybe punting the issue in the short term is that this code enforcement position was only going to be funded for nine months, right? We figured it would take time to hire anyway, so we can probably see how the recruitment on the vacancy works through. If we happen to get several good candidates, that's a different story than we struggle to get one or we got none, right? And, and if there are not enough people out there, we're going to have to figure out a different way to work through our code enforcement issues and that could free up some money for, for a second police officer. My plan on the police officer was to hire this, one this year, one next year and probably one the following year. I just, having enough police officers, there's no question, is vitally important. But we have to think about the entire operations of the city. And, and as you've seen, I've been here, what, three, four months now and the vast majority of issues that have come to my desk are code enforcement issues. And I, I'll share this with council. I have a, a short meeting this week to see if we can leverage technology and AI to, to do some of our code enforcement work. So that could be an oper, you know, a, a potential option. I don't know what it costs, it could be a lot, it could be minimal. These are things that we can let kind of digest over time and see what ends up working. I, I wish we had enough money to hire everybody that we need, we just don't. So in my budget, I tried to split the baby a little bit, says, let's hire one police officer. The chief and I had a conversation and, you know, he was certainly okay with that at the time. I don't blame him for asking for another one. I would have if I were him too. And that allowed us maybe a little flexibility to, to answer or plug some holes in some other departments. Originally, this third officer was going to be a succession plan, right? We didn't know we were getting a retirement. Now we know we have it and so plans have changed a little bit. But the goal was to have the third person come in, work with seasoned veterans for a little while. The retirement comes on, we're back to two. That was kind of the plan. Well, I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work out now.
You know, perhaps we could have some kind of a report at codes to get an idea like what's being left not done besides enforcement. You know, how, how much are we having come in and out? That might help us understand that better. We have a clear handle on what's not getting done with the fire department and the police department, it's very evident. But we don't really have a handle on that. Not that we might re-manage anything, just so that we understand better where this is coming from and why the need is there.
I'm not sure if that kind of report exists, but we'll dig into it and see if there is something.
Because we used to get where did we learn reports and pass by council? Just like, you know, where we stood with, you know, apartment inspections and things like that. So we knew where we stood on track, how many building permits and what was going on. It just helps us to understand the workings when it comes to time.
I'll work with the team and see what we can put together.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, we had a request from the public earlier this year for a presentation by code enforcement before council. You know, here's who we are, this is what we do, this is what we're, we're, we're struggling to do based on priorities and manpower. I'm not sure the timing's right to do that as part of the budget discussion, but now with turnover in January, you know, maybe, maybe once we know what the staffing level is going to be next spring, that, that sort of presentation could take place and, you know, here's what we have believed we keep up with. Now that we have three people, here's what we're hoping to, to catch up on and make current whatever. But just a general overview for the public, this is what, this is what, this is what the code is and this is our responsibility to enforce it.
Sure, and also as an FYI, that vacancy is going to happen in the beginning of December. So there is some time, but not as much as you probably thought there was, just to share that.
Thank you.
Anything else on code enforcement? Okay, I think we're good with that.
All right, last item is on page twenty-six. Rescue squads for thirty-six-twenty-five. And obviously, the number is zero, has been zero for some time. But it's part of public safety, so I figured we wouldn't go through it.
Okay, so next we move on to library and museum.
And I'll ask Angela Gray Controller to come up. That's going to be tab seven. So she will give just a quick overview of what's here and feel free to ask her any questions.
Good evening. First, we'll deal solely with the library. You can see that we are expecting ninety-nine thousand dollars to come in from the library to support their expenses and we will be planning to contribute five thousand dollars on top of that. Total expenses in the library, a hundred and four thousand. These are all, with the exception of about eighty-five hundred dollars in debt payments, a legacy cost related to the employees of the library. They were previously included as a municipal library on the state retirement plan, so their retirement expense has so their retirement expense has increased in this current budget because there were two years where they were in this space of non-contributing, trying to coordinate which party was responsible. And so as a result, we have been back billed for two years of the health, I'm sorry, for the retirement of the library. And that is the reason for the significant increase on line seventy-four-ten-point-eight-ten. Aside from that, they also have health insurance of their retirees. And so that is what we ask for the library to reimburse the city every year of which they do. We, Mr. Cronis and I have met with the library director and one of the board members. And once the budget is approved, we'll come up with a memo of understanding as to how those payments come back to the city. We may change just from an accounting principle standpoint, some of this fifty-five thousand and accrue that back into the twenty-twenty-four year. So before the final budget comes through, because those expenses relate to twenty-two and twenty-three, we may see a small adjustment of that line, but it will be reimbursed through the twenty-four budget process. So that's just a place where that might change. Regarding the Remington, same situation. We do expect reimbursement from them in twenty twenty-four, five of ten thousand seven seventy-four. And the primary purpose of that is to cover their retirees' health insurance. The Remington has a couple of years in arrears to the city. They are, have not reimbursed those, but we do ask for it every single year. They've had some transition in their management over there. I have met with several, along with the previous interim city manager, several board members. Their new executive director, but we're trying to work out an agreement for the city to collect on those expenses as well as the ongoing expenses.
Questions or comments in this area? I'd just like to, to make a comment and I don't know if others on council approached the city manager about this, but I did ask that the five thousand dollar contribution to the library, which we initiated earlier this year, will be continued in the budget. And, and so it is, I just wanted to point that out. One request I have of staff, is it's my understanding that the five thousand dollar grant in the current year was handled with a write-off of the debt due to the city. Is that, is that accurate? I don't think they got a check.
They did not get a check, but we reduced the expenses that we asked for to be reimbursed by the five thousand dollars. So on the initial budget in twenty twenty-four, we had asked for sixty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. We modified that budget to ask them for a reimbursement of fifty-seven thousand dollars with the city contributing the other five. And my math is wrong on that, it's sixty-two thousand, six ninety, that the original budget had with no contribution from the city. So we put that contribution in from the city, we reduced what we expected the library to contribute back.
Okay, I don't know how others in council feel about this. I'd like to see them get a check for five thousand dollars and have the flexibility to use it as they choose.
I think that was the intent. Because that was in lieu of us doing snow removal, lawn care, etc. We wanted to support that.
Okay, so thank you for including that in the budget though. It's, you know, in a way it's token, but for them, you know, as a municipal library, which we can support as a city, it's, it's a very modest effort to try to show that we care. Anything else on Library Museum? Okay, thanks, Rachel. So that covers our agenda for tonight. Is there anything else that anyone in council would like to bring up?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed it, I had a last minute obligation. But yeah, I'm assuming you guys went over revenues?
Yes.
So federal payments and lieu taxes. I'm assuming that's HUD. This is the second item under revenues?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't understand why it's so low. And I sent out an email, of course, last week. You know, when you start looking at equity and things of that nature, in terms of water, sewer, you know? Kind of had that in there, what we receive in lieu of taxes. It's really penis compared to our services, police and fire that, that we give to them, you know? And so you see so many people paying a high tax rate and I think that there should be about two more zeros behind that number for federal government to help us with our budget, honestly. And I don't know how we could get that or what is this agreement, where did it come from? I've asked this for years and never really gotten a good answer, but it's been on my mind.
The current agreement, as far as that pilot goes, is based upon the cost as audited under the Augsburg Housing Authority. And they actually tell us in a roundabout way what their pilot will be. And as you go through the history of this pilot, the way they earn money, it, it keeps going down about three thousand dollars a year. So that is a, I can provide the specifics of how that is calculated, but it's based on the cost and reimbursements within the housing authority. And so their report gets audited, once that report is audited, they, we're able to determine what the pilot is. But the way the cost reimbursements go, that number is going down, so our pilot is going down.
I, I mean, or if we just didn't accept that, said, no, we, we want two more zeros. We need police, because police, if I asked the chief right now, how much, how much, and the other chief you still heard, you know, how much of our services are going, are going to HUD? Would you say what percent, fifty percent?
This is just the Augsburg Housing.
Right. Quarter, that, that's it, but still. It's, it's a tremendous amount of money, you know, when you're looking at six million dollars, a quarter of those services are going to HUD and they're giving us eighteen thousand dollars. I mean, we, we have people paying more than eighteen thousand dollars on their housing taxes, I'm sure. And, and, and it just, it just doesn't seem right and we're talking about, you know, billing people for water and sewer and things like that. And I just, like, I question the whole, it, it's nonsense to me, eighteen thousand dollars is, is nothing. I just, I don't know, what can we do? You know, it, it's really bothering me that, that we're putting all this service. This is the biggest burden of the taxpayers is policing fire. And, and, and it's twenty-five percent of the services going to an agency that doesn't pay us. And so the rest of the taxpayers are paying for, for this service right here that, that we need, you know? It, it's, every year I go through this with the budget.
What I can do is provide the detail of that pilot, when it started, how it's calculated and expiration applicable. And then we can determine the path forward and that.
I mean, all the other communities, this is what they get from HUD, just a little appearance.
I would have to look at the other communities that have our authorities.
I just wonder, you know, it just seems like, you know, we had a conversation earlier in the year about asking for payment in, in lieu of taxes. And we have a mandated paid fire department and we have a police department that's being overtaxed because of new state laws. And, and I just, I say to myself, why aren't we asking the state for more money when so many other communities do get more money from the state to help pay for their mandated projects and police, you know? And obviously this is federal, well, I, I get that, just to say, I mean, we're, we're using our police services to pay for something that doesn't pay us back, so police and fire, you know? So we'll at least dig into it. Yeah, this, this was part of that, my whole point on that email that I sent. So, thank you. I'm going to spout out for a minute here.
Anything else from council? Okay, and again, just to echo the city manager's comments during this meeting, we, we thank you all for the amount of time it takes to get into the weeds here with the, with your respective program budgets and then the internal negotiations that take place between you and the city manager to finally develop the preliminary numbers that hit us. And we will take your, your suggestions and concerns into consideration as we move forward and get a picture of the entire budget before us. But again, thank you.
Your Honor, if I may add too, the reports that you give us really are helpful too, because it takes it and it really just cuts it down and gives us a clear line of where things are between. What the city manager gave us, we have supplementing this, it really is very helpful. I so appreciate that. Even the little binder thing. Chief, you're falling down here, you don't have any little, that's a binder.
All right, so our next budget hearing is on Wednesday, October thirtieth, at six o'clock here in council chambers. With that, we'll close tonight's meeting, thank you.
Thanks everyone, appreciate it.
Excuse me, Andrea? Andrea, are we turned off for, I know Kathy left, but I.